All right, good morning, everyone. Welcome to our Committee of the Whole meeting. Before we get started with our first item on the agenda, which is our briefing on community and police relations, I'm going to take just a moment to welcome this year's Mayor's Youth Council. Yeah, so I'm actually, I think I'll just sit back here and I'll say a few words and then let Shannon come up and introduce our students this year. But just to give you a little background, for those of you who aren't familiar with the Mayor's Youth Council, the Mayor's Youth Council has been in place since 1999. And it gives high school students an opportunity to come and learn about civic engagement and city government, so they spend a full school year with us. This year, we are so excited to have 28 Grand Rapids Public School students from a whole host of different schools. And we'll let Shannon, or we'll let each of them introduce themselves and share a little bit about where they go to school. So we, just so you have a good sense of what they do, they come to City Hall every single month. I meet with them, city commissioners meet with them. They also go out into the community and do community events. And then they organize Kid Speak every year. So Kid Speak is this really great event in April, and the students select the topic and then they work on that. And they have an opportunity to come forward and be heard by elected officials. So that happens in April. I'm sure Shannon will be getting that on our schedule soon. So with that, I'll introduce Shannon, who oversees Mayor's Youth Council along with a number of other initiatives, including the Mayor's 100. And if you want to take it away and introduce these awesome students to us today, I have a few returning students, but most students are brand new to us this year.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor, city commissioners, city managers, city staff. We have our 2018, 2019 Mayor's Youth Council here. We have students from, most GRPS students, or most GRPS schools, but they're all GRPS students. And they're here to learn a little bit more about city government and to be introduced to the functions of city government. So we have a whole host of activities and events planned for them this school year, including Kid Speak, which will be in April, and including meetings with you, Mayor Bliss, every month, and our city commissioners. So what we're going to do now is have each student, and they don't know this, but each student stand up to this mic and tell us what your name is, what school you attend, and what grade you're in, and then you can have a seat. And we'll start with Dominique.
Hi, good morning. I am, my name is Dominique Bell. I go to Innovation Central, and I am a junior in high school.
Can you, if you know what ward you live in, can you also say what ward you live in? And then my colleagues up here from your ward, I know that they hope to connect with the students that are representing their wards as well.
I'm in the third ward.
Third ward.
Good morning. I'm Adam. I'm a junior at City High, and I'm from the second ward.
Great, thanks, Adam.
Morning. My name is Liliana, and I'm a freshman at City High, and I'm in the first ward.
I'm Chi Chi. I'm a 12th grader at City High, and I'm in the second ward.
Welcome back.
Good morning. I am Haley, and I'm in, I'm a freshman at the Grand Rapids Public Museum High School, and I live in the third ward.
My name is Jordan Merrill. I live in the second ward, and I am in ninth grade at the Grand Rapids Public Museum High School.
Good morning. My name is Angelice Monroe. I'm in ninth grade, and I go to the Grand Rapids Public Museum High School.
My name is Madeline. I'm in ninth grade at City, and I'm in the second ward.
My name is Tatiana Sorontas. I live in the first ward, and I go to Union High School, and I'm a junior.
My name is Sherlin. I go to Union High School. I'm a senior, and I live in the first ward as well.
Nice.
Hi, my name's Anthony, and I'm a junior at Union High School, and I live in the first ward.
Hi, my name is Noriah Snell. I go to Union High School, and I'm a sophomore, and I live in the third ward.
Hi, my name is Tilia Davis. I'm a freshman at Ottawa Hills High School, and I live in the third ward.
Hi, my name is Shassidy, and I live in the second ward, and I'm a sophomore at Grand Rapids Montessori High School.
Hi, my name is Nyla Davis. I live in the second ward, and I'm a sophomore at Grand Rapids Montessori.
Hi, my name is Abigail Han. I go to City. I'm in ninth grade, and I live in the second ward.
Good morning. My name is Imani Richmond. I go to City High. I'm in 10th grade, and I live in the third ward.
Hi, my name is Cody Garrison, and I'm in 11th grade at Union High School. I also live in the first ward.
My name is Dunique Doris. I go to City High, and I'm a senior, and I live in the third ward.
Good to see you.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Pablo Villalazo. I go to Union High School, sophomore, and I'm first ward.
Good morning. My name is Madeline Velez. I go to C.A. Frost Middle High. I'm a junior, and I live in the first ward.
Awesome.
Thank you, you all. Great job for that. So you'll see the Brown City Hall throughout the school year, and they're going to have a lot of interesting questions to ask you all throughout this year. So thank you for your time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you. So commissioners, you'll see the students out and about today. They have a, they'll be with us this morning for a committee of the whole, and then they'll be doing a scavenger hunt. And so they may be asking some of you or city staff to help them with that scavenger hunt. Those of you who are in the audience, if you see them out and about here in the, in the City Hall or on the 9th floor, make sure you give them a really warm welcome. So we're glad to have you. I look forward to working with all of you this year, and we'll look forward to following up also with your city commissioners. All right, so next, that will take us to our briefing on community and police relations. I think to start this off, I'll turn to our city manager, who has been working fast and furious since he got here, and this is one of the topics he's been spending a lot of time on. So I think I'll turn to our city manager to tee this up. Then we'll have the chief do a presentation. Commissioners, I'm going to ask us to hold all of our questions to the end, just to make sure that we have an opportunity to get through them, and then we'll turn it back to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
To our guests this morning, good morning. And on the heels of this Veterans Day, I'd also like to thank all the veterans for their service to our community and to our country. We're here today, as the mayor indicated, to follow up on several conversations that we've had with community regarding our community and police relations. Specifically, I want to thank the chief and deputy Payne for being here to help report out on our response to the 38 recommendations of the Grand Rapids Police Policy and Procedure Task Force and work that was done by 21st Century Policing that provided additional assessment of our police departments and the recommendations based on the president's task force initiatives. What I'd like to accomplish today is a discussion. After the chief provides his response to those 38 task force recommendations, I'd like to make sure that we have a good conversation about prioritization of not only the recommendations in that report, but also the various other studies that have been occurring in our community even prior to that, to make sure that we have a good focus and moving the conversation forward. I think one of the quotes that I was impressed in going to our meeting, I think the week of the 24th, was that Ron Davis shared his thoughts on community policing and said it occurs best when the community becomes a co-producer of public safety, that we're working with them, where policing is not just done to them, but it's done with them, and allowing them to have a voice in the many facets of police operations, including the development and implementation of crime reduction strategies. And you're, as you may be aware, this conversation with 21st Century Community Policing began after the Lambert study that showed the disparate outcomes of traffic stops. And the conversation has been going on since 2017, and the police department has been very cooperative in allowing both community and 21st Century to assess their efforts in furthering community policing, and has resulted in these 38 recommendations that the chief is going to highlight. I would like to, again, thank all the members of the task force. You see some of them listed before you, including the work that is, thank them for the work that has been done. They were very deliberate and intentional in meeting, as I mentioned earlier, from 2017 to last month. There were several, seven task force and four community meetings, and those meetings were held across all wards with over 400 people attending. As you looked in your commission packet, the backup showed the 38 recommendations, as you are familiar, were broken down in six areas to include staffing and deployment, internal affairs training, specific area on youth policy, and we have our youth council here today that will be able to hear that report on that area. That was an added scope to the task force scope of work based on incidents that were happening locally while the report was going, study was going on, as well as the other two areas, community policing and crime reduction, as well as recruiting and hiring. 21st Century did provide an initial, additional assessment of those 38 recommendations, and we will talk about those as we talk about next steps. I do want to applaud the police department for their work in moving towards more community policing and transparency even prior to this study starting, which began with the chief himself attending the White House to talk about community policing as well as the deployment. I want to thank this commission and this community and department for the deployment of body cameras that began in '16 and fully implemented in 2017, as well as the conversations that has happened with biased training. And we know that these are just not one-time experience, but this is something, if we're going to improve culture, that has to be ongoing. I think the department's committed to that. As well as the recent achievements this year, certainly all, many of them occurring prior to my arrival, and for that reason, I want to acknowledge the work that has occurred with accreditation with Kalia, as well as, most recently, the department's agreement to publish as part of its effort to transparency all of its policies and procedure online, and being one of the very few departments in the country with a youth interaction policy. I think Ron Davis mentioned less than 10% of all departments in the country have such a policy. I read a report in the media last week that highlighted a number around 4%. So that is, that is truly a unique accomplishment for our department. As well as additional training that we have committed to moving forward. So I want to thank the department for their work today. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to the police chief for him to walk us through the recommendation, his response, and I will come back and talk about next steps. Chief?
Thank you, sir. Good morning, Mayor, commissioners, city manager, myself, and deputy chief Payne are going to walk through the 38 recommendations. I want to recognize deputy chief Payne for...
Sorry, chief, yep.
I want to recognize deputy chief Payne for helping along with Raynor Ross, co-chair of the commission. So this is a relatively aggressively paced overview, but out of recognition how important each one of these 38 recommendations are, I didn't want to not address any one by excluding them. So we'll walk through them. They're broken down into six areas of recommendations.
I think we accidentally jumped ahead, chief. Is that right?
We did.
Yep.
Hey, Travis?
Asante, I'm going to add, since, we'll try to get it online for the public, but so that we can move the meeting forward. I think the commissioners have copies of the PowerPoint, and so if the chief can begin while he's trying to get that together.
Okay, so, and this will be posted online for the community to see. So starting with section one, staffing and deployment. Recommendation one was conduct a staffing and deployment study. We agreed in hall that bid goes to commission on November 27th. 1.2 was policies for proactive patrol. We currently use service referrals and are utilized to accomplish that goal to both track and monitor all of our proactive operations. If you're flipping with me, recommendation 1.3, public meetings prior to sustained law enforcement efforts. We currently do that in hall. It's currently being done through neighborhood association meetings using our community policing specialist as well as our crime prevention coordinator. 1.4 is monthly evaluations of our crime fighting strategies. We're doing that currently with our weekly intelligence and operational summary meetings. 1.5 is to conduct another traffic study, and commissioner will recall the conversation that we had collectively agreed in part with the value of doing another traffic study, but the date was to be determined. We wanted to leave opportunity for the training and the bias-free policing policy to further germinate throughout the agency before we embarked on another traffic study. Recommendation 1.5, collect additional stop data. We agree in part, collecting stop data, we think, is good in the aggregate. It's problematic at the individual level, in part because Michigan licenses do not collect, do not capture race on a license, and we feel that it's intrusive to ask everyone who we stop on a traffic stop how they self-identify for race. So that's an area that we need to have further discussion on. 1.7, analysis of data. Again, we agree that individual review without the context of a traffic study provides very limited value to the data. 1.1, the review was, the recommendation was to review data with a academic institution. We're utilizing Grand Rapids, Grand Rapids GVSU for that process, and we're currently going to discuss that at the conclusion of this meeting.
How's the inside joke? I missed it.
I stumbled on GVSU, and then went with the acronym, is what I assume it was. Recommendation 1.9, participate in the Police Open Data Initiative. We're currently doing that with the Police Foundation. We'll be dashboarding all our data for the public. Section two was internal affairs, and I think this is an opportunity to stress that we did not wait for this report to come out in total before we started implementing change. So recommendation 2.1 was that we should add a clear prohibition against conflicts of interest to existing policies. Once that recommendation came out, we modified our internal affairs policy wording to implement that immediately. 2.2 makes internal affairs complaints easier to file. We agreed and completed that upon receipt of the recommendation. Complaint 2.4, complaint, complaint procedure widely distributed. We agreed and completed that. They're now in vehicles, they're at the front desk in both English and Spanish. Publishing complaint data, recommendation 2.6. We agreed, and that'll be included in this year's annual report. Recommendation 2.7, expand our early intervention system. It's in progress. We currently use IA Pro, which is state-of-the-art at helping identify outliers in terms of complaints. We're going to add bias complaints to that matrix, so we'll be able to identify and address any training needs. Recommendation 3.1 was a training need assessment overall, so we agreed, and we're in the process of doing that. 3.2 is GRPD should include community members and relevant stakeholder groups in developing and presentations of officer training. We agreed in hall in the last three sessions that we have done of training have included community stakeholders. So we brought community leaders along with sworn members, when we had Dr. Lori Friedel from the University of South Florida help us come up with our bias-free policing policy. Fair and impartial policing, which is done with Franklin Covey, is one-on-one collaboration between officers and community leaders. So that is something that we instituted actually prior to the recommendations. Recommendation 3.3 is to continue to improve our cultural competency. So I've recommend, or I've mentioned Lambert, fair and unbiased policing, and policing at the speed of trust, but we recognize that none of those are a one-and-done, that that'll be a continuing effort that the police department and the community continue to undertake together. Section four, I think, is really the one that is going to generate at the conclusion of this brief overview the most conversation. We've been working with legal, and we're working to modify or strengthen the current youth policy. That policy came about, as you recall, collaboratively with all stakeholders of the 21st Century team. So we utilized internal stakeholders, we utilized community, and we utilized the outside assessors to help us craft that policy. So we agree with recommendation 4.2. That's in progress with legal. We agree with 4.3, that the, and that is also in progress. 4.4, same. 4.5 requires additional training, and we agree. 4.6, agreed and in progress. 4.7 is slightly problematic. We agree in part. The recommendation reads to utilize CPS to a greater degree, and the challenge there for the police department is our span of control. We don't control CPS resources, and while we'd love to have greater availability of those resources on weekends and evenings, that's, again, outside our span of control. City manager and I had a conversation about perhaps adding some civilian positions to the police department that could fulfill that CPS role, and we're going to include that in our future budget conversations. Section five, regarding community policing and crime reduction. Commission resolution for community policing. We agreed in part, recognizing that that was outside the span of our control as well. That's commission discretion, whether they choose to implement a, to mandate, I guess is the word that I, mandate a resolution. So again, outside of the span of control of the police department, at the discretion of the city commission, whether they choose to mandate a resolution. Community policing plan, recommendation 5.2, that refers to accountability. It says that we should develop a citywide community policing plan that incorporates crime reduction strategies, community engagement partnerships, and police oversight. We agree, and we're currently doing that, particularly with our OIS meetings. Those are the meetings that we have every Thursday, where one service area gets a in-depth dive regarding crime that's occurred in that service area, as well as the service area captain's response to that crime. Also, more and more has become focused on community policing service outreach that has taken place, and we've recently started to incorporate the elusive numbers that we get per service area into those meetings as well. Recommendation 5.3 is what I'm speaking of. They refer to it as COMSTAT. We refer to it as OIS. 5.4 is a patrol strategy that allows beat officers time to engage with community and non-enforcement activities. We agree in part, the resources is a challenge, again, referring to the November 27th staffing and deployment study. We hoping, hope that that will allow us additional resources so we can get back to really what we recognize as our core mission, which is community policing. Recommendation 5.5 is in progress. That's probably oriented policing. That's something we've been doing a long time with the Grand Rapids Police Department. Teaches officers how to solve community problems in partnership with community. Again, that has become a bit of a resource initiative. On a busy Friday or Saturday night, when calls are stacking and officers don't have a chance to engage with community or youth, because there's a call holding as soon as they clear a prior call, makes it problematic. So we're very optimistic that the staffing study will give us the resources we need to do what it is that we hear from the community they want us to do, which is additional community policing. Recommendation 5.6, incorporate the core principles of community policing. We agree, that's actually in our core values and our mission statement. 5.8, we agree, and that's in progress. That is develop a specific problem-oriented policing incentive program that recognizes and highlights staff, both sworn and civilian. Section six is one that I think commission is aware that we've had success with in the relative short term, and that's recruiting. 6.1 says we should continue our recruitment outreach efforts with a specific focus on minority recruitment and retention. So as you're aware, us changing the hiring paradigm to include the hiring of non-sworn classes has allowed us to hire for greater diversity over the last couple of classes. Previously, the Grand Rapids Police Department hired police officers who were already certified and sworn at the state level. We now can hire people from diverse backgrounds with a heart for service, get them trained up, and make them Grand Rapids police officers. Recommendation 6.2 is the intern program continuation. We recognize how successful that's been as a grow our own program, and we'll continue with that. 6.3 is to continue to use community members as part of the interview process. We've been doing that for several years now, and that has proven to be valuable for us and community. 6.4 is currently ongoing. That's engaging in a national recruitment effort to increase the diversity pool. Getting ready to send officers down to Ohio for a job fair. We're targeting historically black colleges to get additional diversity here in Grand Rapids. So again, with apologies for the electronic failure, looks like we're back to the opening screen. I know commissioners have the PowerPoint in front of you. 38 recommendations. We'll be releasing the PowerPoint to the community so they can see it, and at this time, I'll turn it back to the city manager for an overview of what we currently have ongoing and answer any questions that deputy chief Payne and myself can answer, either about the process or about the outcome of the process.
Thank you, chief. So in looking at the report, obviously, the 21st Century work and the work of the task force is what initially has demanded a lot of our attention, but I know that there's been a lot of good work that has been occurring even prior to that. And what I've attempted to do is with Allison's help there, she's in the back, she was kind of our navigator of the various reports, and we developed a layout, working with the police department, of the many studies that have occurred. And if you look at the various studies since 2015, you'll see four studies that have already occurred, and we are about to either deploy, to begin, three additional studies to include Cure Violence, the university study that chief was referencing earlier with GVSU, and the deployment study that you will see on your agenda for approval, authorization of a contract we anticipate at your next commission meeting. So between those seven efforts, what we can identify at this point, that there are, in addition to the 38 recommendations, there are about 99 or so either recommendations or actions that we will do. Obviously, we've not had the results of the recommendations from GVSU or Cure Violence, but we've asked them to do things that are somewhat related to the various studies. And if you'll go to the next slide, in looking at where there's overlap and where there is congruency, it appears that we have about 73 or so different recommendations between the various studies. And discussing it with the chief, we felt like it was best to prioritize what we can get done in the short term and the long term. Obviously, we do not have the ability to do it all at the same time. And so what we're proposing as action steps for, from this meeting is, you've heard the report out today, on slide, the last, second to last slide, slide 92. You've heard the report out today on the 38 task force recommendations by the chief. Based on the feedback from the task force, as well as working with the law department, city attorney, has been advising us on improving the youth interaction policy, we intend to have an improved policy laid out for the department and the community on December the 1st. And the chief will be operationalizing that at the beginning of next month. We also anticipate doing the initial assessment for Cure Violence, looking at other ways to address crime and poor outcomes among our community, and having them come in and talk to us. As a matter of fact, I think I have a call scheduled tomorrow with someone from Cure Violence. But we thought it was important to prioritize the work of the task force and the work of 21st Century before beginning Cure Violence. So I did, I asked the staff to deliberately pause until we can report back out on this work before moving forward with it, knowing that, I was not aware how long this discussion had been ongoing in our organization until, until recently. As I mentioned earlier, the deployment study will be bringing to you a request for your approval of, for procurement vendor next week. We anticipate the work will start in December, and hopefully, that work will be concluded by March. That will help to inform our understanding of where resources are needed. I'm quite aware of the conversation that previously occurred post-budget, the police department asking for six additional officers, and this request becoming a... Department asking for six additional officers, and this request becoming a part of that conversation to confirm where the need is. It is also my understanding that there were several discussions around crime prevention through environmental design that occurred with the Commission, I believe sometime around July or even earlier. And working with the Chief, as well as some of the other departments, particularly our Planning Department and Suzanne, we look forward to continuing those conversations around what things we can do through zoning to also address crime in our community. And it, since I've been here, I think there have been two incidents that has involved replica weapons that have caused undesired interaction with our officers and youth. And so, just as we are attempting to address training inside the Police Department, I think it's also important for us to start having community conversations about the responsibility of our community and citizens when using replica weapons, the importance of making sure those who sell and those who use them do so responsibly. And I was talking to the Mayor earlier about other communities that have, outside the state, that have already started that discussion, but we can be one of the earlier communities in the state to lead in that effort. And so, my intent is to hopefully have all of this information prior to March regarding those studies that I mentioned earlier, to better inform our development of the budget recommendation that will take in consideration the collective recommendations from the Task Force, taking consideration the staffing need of the Police Department, as well as the conversations about oversight. I believe the Chief referenced that early in the recommendations from the, his responsive recommendations. Ron Davis also talked about, and I think he also highlighted in the assessment the need to, for additional conversation around oversight that's appropriate for each community. There is no one standard way to do that. And, of course, I am also sensitive to the conversations that have occurred on the dais about looking at alternative ways to address crime, as well as those who are victims of crimes in non-traditional ways, particularly for those who are suffering from mental illness. All of those are resource conversations, and I think it's better to collectively do that with discussions of the budget and all the other financial pressures that we're going to have on our budget this year, to include the fact that we are beginning conversations with all of our labor groups about contracts. Long-term, I think there are several studies that we can defer. As I mentioned, there's only so much we can do, and there's a lot of good work that's going on right now. And I would propose that the academic study that the Task Force recommended be utilized, but we do that in perhaps 2020, after we put some initiatives in place, and we'll have the ability to go back and evaluate effectiveness. Otherwise, I think if we're studying it too soon, we're just going to discover what we already know in terms of things that need improvement. So, I think giving some time, some distance between today and a future study would be helpful. And the same thing with the future traffic study. I think the recommendation was to do a study immediately of another year's data. We certainly could do that, but we know what the outcome was of the earlier study, and I would prefer to put our effort in place in terms of moving some things into action and then come back later and see whether or not the things that we've done has had a measurable impact on outcomes. So, with that, I will pause and now turn it over for any questions that you might have for me or the Chief.
And if I could just interject as well, to the City Manager's point, in your packet, you also have a memorandum addressing specifically the assessment that was conducted. So, with apologies for the technical difficulties, somewhat disjointed on the thirty-eight recommendations, you'll find, this will be made available online as well for community stakeholders.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. I'll turn to my colleagues for questions. As we get started on that, I just want to say thank you, to you really and the entire department for, and the City Manager for responding so quickly and having before us today a really thoughtful, comprehensive response. And so, I know I speak for all of us around this table that we really appreciate that. So, thank you. All right. So, I'll turn to my colleagues for questions. I'll start down here with Commissioner Moody.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, let me thank you for the report, Chief and Deputy Chief, that you presented to us today. Secondly, I wanted to say that in reference to what the City Manager said about the traffic study, I'm glad you made that comment, because we've had two traffic studies. I think the best thing to do, as you said earlier, is let's take the actions, what we've already have done, and complete that first before we start talking about doing another traffic study. We already know what the data is. We get so much data all the time, and we never really function on what it is that we have. So, I was glad to hear that. The second thing I wanted to say is that when it comes to community policing, from the listening tours that Commissioner Lanier and I had at the last listening tour on the 30th, a lot of the adults are the ones who are asking for community policing, and they want to have a clear understanding of what that is. It's not so much the fact of working with youth as it is opposed to working with the adults. So, it is the adult community that's asking for community policing, and they want a better understanding. And I also feel that when it comes to the community, when it comes to the trust factor in terms of the speed of trust, it's not so much the community leaders that need to be participating in those programs, but community people who are engaged in some of the situations that have occurred in their community. In other words, we have pastors that are involved, and we have some community leaders that are involved, but sometimes the common person needs to be involved in those speed of trust programs so that they can get a better understanding and a better relationship with the police. And with that, the community wants to have a relationship with the Police Department, as you perhaps know, and they want that relationship to be not a relationship where they're being looked upon, especially in the Third Ward, as criminals. I think that's important.
So, to your point, Commissioner, what you said really resonates with us. I don't want to do a disservice to the officers in terms of community policing initiatives that are currently ongoing. So, community policing is both an operational structure and a philosophical mindset. So, officers every day, when they're out, they're engaging with community, whether it's a special program, whether it's at the Boys and Girls Club, or whether it's, as time permits, on calls, are utilizing the principles of community policing to enhance trust and build relationships. That being said, as we talked about problem-oriented policing and building real relationships, sitting down over a cup of coffee, spending a half hour in a barber shop, getting a chance to walk a business district and talk to business owners, that is the portion that we're somewhat limited to because of our resources. But to your point, we hear the same thing from community, that they very much want to be a partner in this.
Thank you. All right. Others who have questions or comments? Commissioner Lanier?
Yes. Thank you so much, City Manager, Chief, and DC for presenting. I just have two questions. The first one is, at the last session, the consultants engaged the audience on their perspective on the various recommendations. I don't know if that was collected in some way. I know people kind of reported out, but I'm curious to know what were the results of the surveying of the community regarding the recommendations? That's one question.
That's a great question, because we're still waiting for one final piece of data from Twenty First Century Consultants, and that is the collating the data or the feedback that we received in that last meeting. So, James Kopples, facilitator, his wife, will put that into a document and get that to us.
Okay. Great. And then, the second question is the recommendation, I think it's the first recommendation, 1.1. It's the recommendation regarding studying for staffing and deployment. And so, in a previous meeting, when we were talking about this subject, we were talking about delaying, you know, working on this or looking into this further until City Manager Washington was here in Grand Rapids. He had been voted on being our City Manager but had not located, relocated here. So, I wanted to talk through the expertise that we already have internally. I think his experience in HR is incredible, and I think your staff has really good experience. I think the union leaders, our HR Department, as well as our City Attorney Department, you all are fully equipped, in my opinion, with having enough information about the existing contracts, the contracts that may be open for negotiations next year to assess, you know, the staffing. We've talked about this repeatedly, about what areas we would want reevaluated. So, you know, we've talked about whether it's required that officers are the ones directing traffic across the street during art prides, or when there is an event at DeVos Place, as an example. So, you know, could we do our own internal assessment before we, and I don't know how much the RFP is listing that we would, I'm guessing it's already decided, if you're bringing it next week for a vote, you know, having an external consultant yet spending more money to do what I think we have the expertise in-house to do. Now, that's just me and my opinion.
No, I appreciate that recognition, Commissioner. So, what we're actually contracting for is a much deeper dive. What the Staffing and Deployment Studies do now is they come in and they take a look at your RMS and your CAD data, and they come up with how much of an officer's time is dedicated to calls and how much of it is discretionary time. So, while we can tell you anecdotally that officers are being called, 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 best practices before we invest in 25, 30, or even potentially more officers, is for them to take a look, us to give them that data, and then for them to analyze the data and get back to us regarding best practices regarding a 60, 40 in terms of time dedicated on calls and time left for community interaction. So, what they're doing, we don't have the internal capacity to do. What you referenced, we certainly do have the ability to recognize what we're hearing from community and what we're seeing internally.
So, how much is the contract?
The contract that's going in front of Commission, the group that was selected, is for $137,000.
So, when I think about that amount of money, and I'm not trying to simplify this by any means, like, everything is on YouTube, right? Well, my husband has a repair to do for his car, the, you know, water hose, whatever it is, he can find a video on YouTube. And I think the same thing happens with, you know, best practices. There are experts sharing their information on the Internet about some of these things. So, what's the formula that we can put in place to study our own data? I think frequently, we're giving our data to someone, paying a whole lot of money. We already know the results. It's rare that the results come back in a way that we're surprised. So, they're just looking at information that we're providing them, and how can we do this better? Or how do we become the experts after we spend this so that we can start making $150,000 every quarter on doing this for others? I'm serious, because we just keep studying ourselves over and over, or allowing others to study us at our expense, and it's just becoming too costly.
So, to your point...
Chief, I think the City Manager wants to respond. And I'll just add, too, I think that is kind of the collective voice around this table is, okay, we need to move to action. And I know finding that balance is critical, but I think City Manager wants to respond to that. And then, Commissioner Kelly has a question.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think Commissioner Lanier is on target. The study will probably not only validate the requests for staffing levels, because there's been a significant reduction in staffing since 2010. The community has considered to continually have grown, and number of incidents and calls have increased. And so, there will be a need for more resources. I think where the study would help would be to bring about some kind of independence, because there was skepticism, for lack of a better term, of whether or not all those resources needed to be uniform or in other ways. I do not think that it is necessary for us to have a study in order to bring back a balanced recommendation that would call for resourcing the department, both through sworn and non-sworn resources. I think we do have the collective insight to do that. The question would be whether or not there would be enough trust in what we would bring back, both with community as well as others who might have concerns about whether or not we're resourcing the department collectively. But we absolutely have the wherewithal within the organization to reevaluate our resources, both for patrol, community policing, as well as other non-sworn resources that are used in the department as well as outside the department.
Just a quick response, Mayor, and I know you need to move forward. I think, I think the same distrust that exists, that potentially could exist with whatever the results would be, would actually follow into the consultants that we would hire, because most people believe that the consultants are saying what we're telling them to say. So, you know, why spend the $125,000 if people are thinking that, okay, you know, because you've already said all of the items that potentially will come out of it. And so, if people, if we already know that that's the result, people are going to say, okay, they're just giving them what they want, and they're just packaging it in a format for $125,000. So, I just, I think we need to really reevaluate whether we do that. I think that expense at this time is preventing us from moving forward. We've been having this conversation, and I know Commissioner O'Connor will probably weigh in in just a second about his passion about that, but we've been having this conversation since we allocated the million dollars two years ago. And we just need to take some action, I think, on some of these things for the community's sake, as well as for the sake of, I think, the rank and file. They're becoming a little frustrated with not being, feeling like they're not being heard, and I think we just need to do something. If we have the expertise, I don't see why we would spend the money.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Kelly?
Yeah. Well, I guess I'm going to modify my comments a moment, because I do think that, to the Manager's point, we do need an independent voice on this. We've come this far, and I think, I do think we can move forward with some recommendations. There is, I think, a clear need for some additional officers. I'll say that, and I suspect that we're going to hear that from the report as well. And I think there are some opportunities for the support, like was mentioned in here, for example, someone that's working in a civilian position for Child Protective Services. We heard from Officer Witkowski about his work in mental health, and that's a huge lift with what's going on in terms of the work that Network for Haiti is doing. I think, too, we can look at perhaps flexible hours for our community police officers, for example, and I would leave that up to you, Chief, of course, to determine, but I think that there's a need for that. But I just wanted to say, first of all, this is back to my original comments, thank you. Thank you to you, to our union. I know you have had a lot of conversations in the community. Reverend Moody, I think you've been part of those conversations. You've had many conversations with us as Commissioners, and I hear your frustration. It's been a long haul. We've had a long wait as well to fill the City Manager's position. And so, I think, I just want to thank you all, and I want to thank the community for standing up and saying this is what we need, and for giving us input around community policing there, and my colleagues. I mean, this hasn't been easy for any of us, because we know that, and we have heard loud and clear, that sometimes the officers aren't feeling appreciated enough, and we are very open to doing a better job of that. Chief, I know I've asked you, is there a way that we can be even more responsive, especially if there's been a crisis? We've certainly tried to do that when our officers have been, their lives have been threatened. And if there's a way to have a communication to help us with that, I would very much, I know we'd all appreciate that. So, in terms of these recommendations, I think that, you know, it was great to get your feedback and your agreement, and I agree with all of your agreement with, in part as well. I think they've been great. I did notice that 2.8, you didn't mention about that. You didn't talk about that recommendation, but we did hear from Twenty First Century CP around oversight, so I'm looking forward to hearing from the Manager and you all about how that might work for this particular community. I just want to say, too, and that when I was 14 years old, the Detroit riots were going on, and they were also happening here in the city of Grand Rapids. And that was, soon after that, the Police Foundation, which you mentioned in here, Chief, and you have referred to them for advice, was formed with a grant from the Ford Foundation. And I remember looking at their recommendations, because the conversation then was so exact, almost exactly the same as it is now, about community policing. People were asking for foot patrols. I remember, I started a few years later at East Town as one of the first organizers of... there. That was 38 years ago, and I think we might even have somebody around this table who's around 38 years old. So, it's, it's dating me, but that conversation kept going on and on, and so, the, the chief at that time, and future chiefs also, added a component around community policing. So, this conversation has been going on for a long time, and, and yet, we haven't made the progress that I think that we need to make. We've made a lot this, in the last two years. Our department needs to be commended for its response to the, to the community for asking for body cams, for example. I know it's difficult, this conversation around youth and policing and the complications there. We don't want to put our officers at risk, but at the same time, we want to honor the fact that young people can be traumatized. So, it's, it's, it's complicated. In terms of the staffing, I just, I do want to remind you, I think now, given the recent elections and the conversations around Me Too, we're all thinking, as women, that we are 51% of the population. So, as we are considering hiring, I want you to also consider how many, how we can recruit more female officers. I, I just want to mention one in particular who has passed away, Pam Carrier, who was the officer, the captain for our ward when Rossett and I served together as commissioners. And what a difference she made. I know that everyone in the department would agree with that. It was just tragic that she died so soon after she retired, but she was, she was amazing, and I know that adding more women will make a difference. So, I just want to give my sincere thank you to all of you, and hope that we can do something in the form of oversight that is sincere, that honors you, that honors this community, and that that's the position we're in, to listen to both, of course, and we honor both. And also, that is sustainable, because, like I said, many years have passed, and we're still facing some of the same problems. And, and, you know, that whole definition of, and I don't want to say stupidity, because I think what we're really doing is, is wise here, is difficult, and I cannot thank you enough, all of you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Very briefly, Recommendation 2.8 is discussed at length in the assessment memo. It's on page three and four, discussing the appropriateness of a civilian oversight for our agency. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, from, that was from 21st Century CP?
No, this is my response to their report. So, this is my product. And having said that, regarding recruitment...
That was my misunderstanding, then, because it didn't say...
I apologize. I didn't present it appropriately. And to your point regarding recruitment, you're, you're dead on. When we talk about diversity, it's not just racial, it's race, gender, orientation, socioeconomic background, perspective. That's what makes us a stronger department.
Thank you. That's awesome.
All right, I'm going to go to Commissioner Arpart, and then I'll see if Commissioner Jones, I'll kind of want to say a few comments, and I'll let our city manager wrap it up or answer any additional questions that he hears from any of you.
Yeah, and I just want to affirm, you know, City Manager Mark, and I got to go to the swearing-in, and there were many women who were sworn in in this last recruitment class. It was actually almost half, which was pretty, pretty commendable. I want to thank you for all these efforts. I was going to make a joke about having 99 problems on page 45, but I apparently only have 73, but that's a lot.
Unique ones.
73 unique ones. So, I really am a firm believer in incentivization of the professionalization of the department, and so, I look forward to celebrating a good contract for putting in this work and doing all these things above and beyond. And I just ask the city manager to let us know what we can do to support you getting to that result. As well as, you know, for me, I am in favor of doing the study, as much as I don't want to spend $137,000, as long as that we have all the information we need in time for the budget. So, again, I ask the city manager, whatever you need from us to approve things, to be ready for that budget conversation, please, we, we want to be ready for that to make these, put these things into action at that time. One question that I had, I think I'm also in favor of waiting until 2020 for another traffic stop study, but is there a way that you can give us some sort of regular updates on, you know, the disparity data from your internal data collection points, so that we're not waiting until 2020 to see if we're making any progress?
Sure. So, the Police Foundation, our open dashboarding, which we're working with them now, we've given our, our first group of data, and they'll be benchmarking us with other agencies nationwide. So, once we go live on that shortly after the new year, everyone will be able to look and get a sense as to where we are.
Okay. That's great. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief, and Deputy Chief, and City Manager, for this rather robust response and the, the work put into, I guess, pairing down, pairing it down to 73 unique recommendations. I, it would, I do want to mention one thing that, that wasn't included, that perhaps could come, or could be added to our list. Back during the creation of the 12-point plan, there was the Arrest Disparity Study. And in fact, I think it was mentioned that, that GRPD would take a look at that, or look to pay more attention to it after the Policy and Procedures Task Force had, had, had done their work. And so, I want to make mention of that. I, a couple of things. One is, City Manager mentioned something that's, I think, critically important. One of the things he mentioned was the need to address, I think, an issue that is, is very important, and that is the danger of replica guns, and the need to engage community at a much greater level, so that we can address that issue of, A, the danger of it, and the potential of, of having interaction with law enforcement if you're, if, if it's being carried. And so, I think that's something that we need to move on sooner rather than later. And along with that conversation, I am very much in favor of also looking to better engage the community around the role of community with regards to policing, and in particular, the role of community in reporting incidents that occur within community. This is a long time or longstanding issue that brings about a significant amount of tension. You know, there are those who feel as if any communication with the police is considered snitching, and I think we have a responsibility to engage community and really advocate and push for the importance of more communication with law enforcement, so that, I think, what it comes down to is, is then law enforcement has the ability to better focus on where the actual issue is, and I think there's some benefit to that compared to perhaps looking at the whole, and instead focusing on where they know the issue is. And so, I would like to be a part of, of perhaps even organizing conversations around the city, not just perhaps in one part of the city, but I think the issue of replica guns in particular, I don't know the data, but I'm assuming that it's not just something that you find in one particular ward. So, I would like to make sure that we have an opportunity to speak to as many civilians as possible. Also, I, I think around the, the issue of, I think we keep on, we're, we're hearing this, and we know it's not just local, but it's a, a national phenomenon, this issue around trust and relationship and transparency, and the critical importance of it. Again, it's something that is historical in nature, the, the distrust that's in place between police and community, in particular, communities of color, those who have been historically marginalized. And when I think about that issue in particular, as well as the issue of oversight, I would like, one, one thing I realize, I think we can all agree, is that no one seems to be totally at peace or happy at this point in time, whether it's rank and file, whether it's the community as a whole, or, or specific communities, in terms of what's happening with police and community relations. I think that that speaks to the lack of trust and the lack of relationship. I've had enough discussions and have heard enough from community to know that there's a desire to have something that's far greater than what we have in place right now by where the Civilian Appeals Board and other oversight efforts. And I know that rank and file feels perhaps that that is, is, is a good structure that we have in place, that, that has met the need of community. I would like for us to give some significant thought to the, perhaps, the creation or the, the idea of a, a third-party individual who would be very much outside of the norm, and this would be someone who could do everything from educating the community and law enforcement on how to strengthen police and community relations. I would see this as an independent civilian, or an administrative office that could assist in monitoring, monitoring concerns and complaints of alleged administrative violations of the, of the department. This could be someone who would have greater connectivity with the Public Safety Committee, the Civilian Appeals Board, as well as task forces and other nonsworn departments to educate and develop this non-traditional, community-wide crime reduction strategy. And I say that because it's, it's, it is, I think, it takes us, it will take us in the right direction. Again, I, you know, the community perhaps wants something stronger. There's, there's always been talk about subpoena power given to the Civilian Appeals Board. I think an individual who would serve in the capacity of being independent, I think, would serve, I think, a, a very strategic, in a very strategic way, and it would be someone who, again, wouldn't necessarily have subpoena power, but it would be someone who could operate and navigate within the various realms of, of law enforcement, as well as community, and, and the other task force that we have in, in play. And so, something I think for us to consider, and I think it would hopefully be something that both law enforcement, as well as community, would see as, as a value add to what we already have. And so, I want to, want to, want to put that out there to close things out on my remarks.
So, I do want to thank you and the other commissioners who've recognized how hard the department has worked the last couple of years in this, in these avenues. I don't think there's a department that has done as much as we have in the last couple of years, whether it's the Lambert Study, whether it's 21st Century Policing, whether it's the Kalia accreditation. And while it all hasn't necessarily turned out with the results that we would have hoped, I think that goes to the process, that it was credible, that officers were engaged, the community was engaged, the commission was supportive. So, to your point, Commissioner, it's a work in progress, and I think we've got the right people in place to, to get to where we want, where we want to be. Thank you.
I'm going to have, give Commissioner O'Connor a chance. I'll make a couple of comments, and then I want to make sure that we give our city manager an opportunity to talk about next steps. Commissioner?
And I'll just quickly echo a few of the comments, or just thanking the, you know, the department and the community for coming together willingly to, to go through this exercise. You know, for me, it all comes back to, to Recommendation 1.1, which is the study about staffing, and it's something I've been, you know, on my soapbox for, for a long time, talking about the need to have more, more bodies. And I think, you know, the remainder of the recommendations in this report are what they are, and there's clearly a, we clearly have a police department that is recognized as one of the best-trained in the country, that has one of the highest certified in the country, and yet the community's demanding different outcomes. And so, there's really only one logical solution, and that is, if you want different outcomes, you have to be able to have the people in place to provide those different outcomes. And, you know, I'm 100% on board to, to pay for a staffing study that will, I think, will demonstrate quite clearly that, you know, I appreciate the chief's recommendation for six community officers, but I don't think that changes a thing. I think, I think it's going to be much, it's going to come back much higher than that. So, as I've said before, and I'll say again, that we set aside a million dollars a year for the next five years to improve community police relations, but I have no desire to, to spend any of that money unless it's around staffing. And so, you know, I can justify spending some money to provide a, a staffing study to, to take a look at this. And, you know, again, if you, you know, as a, as a, someone who owns a business and, and understands if you want different outcomes, you have to change the way in which your business works sometime. And if you put increased demand on people, they can only do that for so long, until they burn out, they make bad decisions, they, you know, things fall apart, things get forgotten, someone gets hurt, and that's not an outcome that I want to see in the city of Grand Rapids. And so, you know, as our community grows, as the demands on our police department increase, there's, there is a breaking point somewhere. It doesn't matter how well they're trained, it doesn't matter how, well, how many certifications and, and awards they have, it's, it's, if you want to do something different, we have to provide different outcomes. And sometimes that means we have to do that early, and we have to, we have to do that for a while, and then things change, you know? As, as we look at it across all of our various city departments, whether it's, you know, the Water Department, or the, the snowplow drivers, or whatever, we, we know that we have a, 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 a point at which we're going to have a mass exodus of people, and we know that's the case in the police department, too. And so, just, we're not, we're not unique in that manner across the country, that there's, everyone's looking for people. And so, you know, I think it behooves us as a, as a community to, to ensure that we're trying to, to build the pipeline now, even if it costs more money in the short term, to bolster our ranks, knowing that there's a cliff looming, and if not, we're going to be in a real predicament very soon. So, I'll leave it at that.
All right. Thanks, Commissioner. I'll add a, I'll add just a comment to that, two, two thoughts. One, I want to add my thanks again. I see a lot of, of our officers and union representatives here and community members here, but also, Chief, thank you for your leadership. You know, this really has been a commitment by the community and the department to come together, knowing that we have shared goals for our community. We all want a safe community. We all want to build trust. We want to have good community police relations, and the only way we're going to do that is by coming together and doing it together. And I know that's difficult work sometimes, so I want to just add my thanks to everyone who've put so much time and energy into this. I want to, I want to add my thoughts about the deployment study, and, and we talked about this a little bit last time. To me, the, and even going back to what Commissioner O'Connor said, I, I wouldn't say that anyone around this table necessarily disagrees that we need to add staff. I think what we talked at length about is making sure that it's a comprehensive analysis, and it includes deployment. Many of us around this table said, we know that our detective unit is stressed, you know, our, can we use civilians to respond to individuals that have a significant mental illness? You know, can we think differently about individuals that we have significant contact with and do more preventative work on the front end? Do we need to add civilians? Do, what does community policing look like, and how is that deployed thoughtfully and, and potentially differently throughout our city? And to me, the value is not just the staff, staffing component, but the deployment, which Ron Davis, I believe, talked to every single one of us about, that there's real value in having a fresh look at that, and having it be a comprehensive approach that includes both sworn officers and civilians, and looking at those high users, and can we do something different? The one recommendation in here that gave me pause, and I, Chief, I think I shared this with you last time, when the results were preliminary, I would be really cautious about our, our, how we respond with Child Protective Services. Having worked with a lot of families who have contact with CPS, it can be a really frightening experience for families, and quite frankly, they can be so concerned about the outcome that they, they don't want to open up. And so, I think, I think in our community, we're lucky enough to have a lot of other really good nonprofit organizations. We already have a relationship with Family Outreach Center and some work we're doing with them. But if we're going to do something different in responding to, to youth, my preference is that we look beyond just CPS, quite frankly. Not that they aren't an important partner, but their role is very, very different. And so, that's my only caution as I read the recommendations. I have, I have a few other questions that I'll just email you, that I want some additional information on, that we don't need to take time today to follow up on. So, those are my final comments. I'll turn it to the city manager to kind of wrap this up and talk about next steps one more time, and then we'll move on to our next item.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I, I think certainly good feedback from the commission. As I listen to the feedback, I will give the commission one more opportunity to consider the deployment study, and I do think we will proceed in bringing it forward for consideration at the next meeting. I've heard from most, but not all, and I'll confirm whether or not that, that is indeed the consensus, but it, it appears, at least from the discussion on the dais. Regarding those other resources or opportunities to, to resource the department, both with sworn and, and non-uniform officers, again, I would add, I would be in the best position to make a determination of that when the budget is proposed. And so, we will continue to work on evaluating those needs, certainly to Commissioner Kel, to Commissioner Repart's concern, whether or not we have the results of the deployment study, we still, we have a good idea. I think it would, it would validate it, but I will be prepared, we will be prepared to make that recommendation with or without those results. Hopefully, they will be in by that time. But again, we look forward to at least continuing that portion of the conversation next week, and having the chief both affirm his revised youth policy by... and having the chief both affirm his revised youth policy by the 1st of December. I did hear some desire to even have the replica gun issue discussion sooner. I'm going to have to depend on my colleague, city attorney, because I know there are a lot of other legal issues that we need to understand, and so perhaps we'll have an executive session briefing on those matters as it relates to gun laws and our current ordinance against weapons in minors prior to then. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you. All right, commissioners, next that will take us to our second item. Hopefully, we'll be able to breeze through some of these. First action item before us, this is a resolution approving a request for me to travel to DC in January. This is for two mayoral conferences. One is the U.S. Conference of Mayors and the Mayor's Innovation Project. Those are back-to-back in DC. The third, I believe, third week in January. So moved?
Support.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Commissioners, one other, just something to put on your radar, and I'll ask Laura to get these dates out. Next year, in March, will be the Capitol Conference in Lansing with Michigan Municipal League with the new administration and all the newly-elected officials. You may want to mark your calendars for that, to make sure that you're able to attend one of the, at least one of the two days. There's a lot of opportunities to connect with legislators. And then the MML Conference in September, and the National League of Cities is also having a conference in March and then in November. So, I'll get that out to you. If you're interested in attending any of those, you can let us know so that we can bring an approval forward. All right, next will be a resolution approving the establishment of a residential parking permit zone on the north side of Lake Drive from Diamond Place to 120 feet west.
So moved?
Support.
All right. Josh, you want to tell us about this? We had a public hearing related to this, commissioners.
Yes. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. So, as is referenced in the resolution in front of you today, so, starting in summer of this year, when we were doing some on-street deployment of parking meters and doing some outreach with the community, we notified a few series of areas across the city. This is the first of those. So, we have been doing some outreach. There's a small area on Lake Drive, just west of Diamond, where there are some buildings that don't have any parking at all whatsoever onsite. So, in terms of trying to address those issues, trying to produce four to six spaces for the residential units in that area, and this would allow for this. So, we've noticed all of the residents, as well as the businesses in the area. We had a public hearing on October 23rd. There was no public comment at that public hearing, but the clerk did receive one email communication, and it was generally in support for what was trying to be done in this specific area. Upon action today, we would try to get this done within 60 days, and that would have us starting early next year.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Kelly?
I just want to say thank you to Josh. I know this has been a lot of work for you, because there's always some particular property that is an exception to the rule, so thank you for the follow-through on that.
Also, Josh, thank you for what you've done thus far. I have a question in reference to the old meters on the streets, especially on the Uptown City area and the Wealthy Street. Some of the residents was concerned that the meters were going to be removed, but they don't know when, but people were still driving up to those meters and putting money in them. So, what's going to happen with that?
So, in the transition of areas where we're going from the old to the new technology, each of the actual pay stations say they will not be taking payment until November 19th. So, as long as the old technology is still there, they can feed the coins associated with that, and we are doing no parking enforcement in the area until Monday, December 4th. We've been working with the Uptown Business District to help make sure that, and they just published an FAQ last week that was distributed to all of the businesses in the area, and we're doing the same thing. And also, we've been available to go out onsite to do tours on how to use the machines and the equipment themselves. Great question, though.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next that will take us to a resolution approving establishment of a residential parking permit zone over on Alabama Avenue Northwest from 420 Alabama to First Street and continuing north to Second.
So moved?
All right.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is the second item that also came about as a result of the meter expansion that we talked about on Alabama Street. There are two different residential buildings that have constructed there, of which they have limited onsite parking. So, the meters there were believed to have caused some impacts to the availability for parking for the residents, so this would actually allow for a series of permits to be available to those residents in this area. At the public hearing on October 23rd, there was one resident concern about the hours of operation. We have proposed in this that we will continue to evaluate it, but are going to keep it similar to the hours of operation, and if that changes, we would also change or recommend and come back for your approval to extend those hours.
Great. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right. Next will be a resolution, and this is to set a public hearing to consider a residential parking permit zone on Wealthy Street. Can I get a motion?
So moved?
All right. Josh, anything to add to this?
Just that it was brought up earlier today that they would actually like to postpone this public hearing indefinitely until we can continue to do some additional outreach. There was a little miscommunication, wanting to get more public feedback, but we're going to continue to do that through some other processes, and then we would bring this back early next year.
Great.
Mayor, if I can add to that, and I just, again, I want to thank Josh. He was out with Commissioner Moody and I, talking to the folks in Uptown about this. There are always, again, these little glitches that he has to, and he's got meetings set up already to do it, but there's just not enough time often with everything else on his schedule. And because we're heading into the holidays, after having conversations, even this morning with a number of people, we decided that it'd be best to just postpone until probably January, but indefinitely. So, I would like to move to postpone indefinitely.
To postpone the public hearing?
That's right.
Okay. So, Commissioners, Commissioner Kelly has a motion on the floor to postpone this public hearing?
Support.
All right. Any additional questions or comments? All right. It'll be to postpone indefinitely, and we'll let, we'll leave it at that, and then I'll let you all follow up.
Yeah.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right. Next will be a resolution approving a brownfield plan amendment for the Inner City Christian Federation to support a mixed-income housing project at the former Eastern Elementary School.
So moved?
Support.
All right. Jono, you want to tell us about this?
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. This is final approval for a project that you've seen several times before. As a reminder, this is about a $9.5 million redevelopment of a former elementary school. Exciting because it is a fully-income-certified, mixed-income development with both 60%, 80%, and 120% AMI housing, as shown on the table in your memo. Will be a LEED-certified building, and this final approval will allow the brownfield authority to make investments in the project with a $465,000 grant from its local brownfield fund and about $175,000 of tax increment revenue financing for the project.
Great. This is such an exciting project. That school has sat vacant for a very long time. Jono, I just have one question, and I don't know if you can answer this for me or not. On this site, and you can kind of see this in the picture, between the parking lot and where the new playground is, there's a number of concrete ramps. There's one place that has railing that's temporarily boarded up, and I'm just curious if that will be fixed as a part of the project, or if that technically falls on park property, and if we need to do something about that.
Yeah, I don't have the answer to that. I do know that with the recently completed Kaboom Playground there, that access to the city's park was required, accessible access to the city's park, and that's provided by using ICCF's property. So, until such times, there are further improvements at the park property, that's going to be the way to access that. ICCF will be making site improvements. It's a very difficult site, as you know. It drops about 40 feet from one side to the other, so the arrangements for eliminating that slope down, I'm not entirely sure.
Well, I'm happy to follow up. I just would hate for them to invest millions of dollars into this building and then have the green space be in such poor condition, particularly, there's a whole stretch next to the playground that's in really poor condition. So, I'll follow up with our second ward commissioners, just to make sure that as that project is done and comes to a close, that the park space is also graded and improved a bit.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Maybe you could go sliding down that hill.
We could.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right. Next that will take us to a resolution approving a brownfield plan amendment for Habitat for Humanity of Kent County for the Plaza Roosevelt Redevelopment Project.
So moved?
Support.
All right. Another really exceptional project here in our city. We had, Commissioners, we had a public hearing on this. I think all of us are familiar with this project. I think most of us have gone on a tour. This will be for Habitat for Humanity. Again, these are owner-occupied units. The project has both rental units, dwelling places doing, but Habitat will be doing the owner-occupied. And this is at the site where there will be a new high school built and public space and some mixed-use buildings as well. Any questions about this?
That's great.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right. Next will be a resolution approving a brownfield plan amendment for HGR-1 LLC, which is a project located at 10 Ionia Avenue Northwest.
So moved?
Support.
All right. Anything to add about this one? I think we've all heard about this project multiple times as well. It's changed a little bit. We all know from what was originally proposed, but it's still an important site in the heart of the city, ripe for redevelopment. Any questions, Commissioners? Jono, anything to add on this one?
Nothing to add, just, again, you've seen it many times before, 13-story mixed-use project with about $30 million of investment in the historic district.
I do have one question. Who owned that area when it was a parking lot before?
It's been owned by the Hinman Company, which is the developer. For quite some time, they also own the parking ramp across the road.
Okay. Good. Too bad we didn't. Well, I'm just thinking about our consideration of housing in the future, and if we own something that we can add some lower-income housing. But thank you. That's all I needed to know.
Yeah, that's a great question. I think from the multiple conversations we've had, this is such a difficult site because of the size, that it's just hard to fill, fit a lot of density. Yeah. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right. Next will be our 2018 Water Sewer Rate Study, and this is the initial introduction and initiation that will begin a 20-day comment period. I don't think I need a motion on this. It's correct, do I?
No. This is just the introduction. We'll up-
Okay. I don't need a motion.
The resolution will come in December.
All right. Thank you. All right.
Okay.
Molly, you want to tell us about this? I think all of us are familiar with this, because we've gone through it in years past, so.
Yes, and I think we're good with the PowerPoint, right, Asante? So.
It looks good so far.
So good. So far, so good. Okay. This is the 2018 Water and Sewer Rate Study Introduction. We, I always come to you, for those who are, you know, newer to this process, I come introduce it in November, and then we have a, for the Utility Advisory Board, that's the group that includes our, we're a regional system, so it's our customer community. Oh, they're already leaving me.
This is very interesting, students, but I think they have an 11 o'clock commitment, Molly. It's not you or the topic.
Maybe they'll come see me later on their scavenger hunt. But this is, we're a regional system, so we include communities like the city of Kentwood, Cascade, Grand Rapids Township, Walker, city of Walker. And they get a 30-day review period that started last Friday, when we delivered their copy of the Water and Sewer Rate Study. And it's also posted online. We included the link in the PowerPoint presentation, as well as in the memo and the agenda documents you have. And then today kicks off the 20-day comment period specific to the city of Grand Rapids, where we take all the information we get from the community, they, there's provided through our press release and in these documents where they can write in their comments. We use that to inform our budget process moving forward. So, then I'll be back in December to bring forward the resolution for approval, and that will be December 18th. So, starting out, these are the general building blocks of the rate study. We are working towards what we call a revenue requirement, what we base our rates on. These green boxes are all the cost elements of the rate study. We start out with the operating and maintenance expense as of June 30th, which is the close of our fiscal year. We add on a assessment of our assets. That includes a depreciation and return on investment parts of the revenue requirement. And then we have other items like CSO or other payback agreements that get built in. So, those are our costs. Then we go down to those blue building blocks, which is what we use to credit back against the revenue requirement, what brings down that revenue requirement. So, that has to do with other revenues we collect throughout the year that help. And there's the penalty revenue that we use to fund the city and customer community circuit breaker, and I'll explain that later on in the presentation. And also, there's build volume, which is what drives the estimation of what we expect to collect in the next rate year. The, we'll start out with operating and maintenance expenses. The big story here is we had an increase for both the water and the sewer utility. A lot of that is driven by we're filling our vacancies, which was sorely needed. We, in the past, we've been building in a little bit into our rates because we've been hiring in a lot of temp help, but now that we're getting positions filled, that's helping. We also have a lot of reinvestment going on through our field ops crew. And specifically, I list out, you know, the electricity costs are up. We have some contractual services out for the sewer utility that added to their cost as well. The next step is the, what's going on with our assets. So, as of June 30th, we put $11 million worth of assets into service for Grand Rapids, well, for their integrated system, which is a cost or an asset that would apply, the depreciation and return on investment against that asset would apply to the whole system. We had some work out at the Lake Michigan Filtration Plant, and that included the South Clearwell improvements. And also, for our non-integrated systems, that's community-specific cost. In Grand Rapids, we had some work on, like, College Avenue. The Livingston Pump Station's another example. And you'll see, we also build in through Task 10 what we expect to put into service at the end of this calendar year, and that's another $15.9 million. So, we're doing significant reinvestment, significant infrastructure work. And for the sewer utility, not quite as much assets as far as monetarily going into service this year, but still close to $5 million at the end of June 30th. Significant work in Grand Rapids along Market Avenue from the water reef, the water resource and recovery facility out to Bartlett along Market Avenue, and then going into service by the end of this fiscal year, or at the end of this calendar year is another $8.5 million. Again, more significant sewer main work. We'll keep moving along. You guys are doing good. The circuit breaker, that's, I haven't mentioned that yet. That's the penalty revenue we use to buy down our rates. 87.5 of that penalty revenue is available. It's on the table that we can use. But the function of the circuit breaker is we calculate what the average increase of rates are going to be, and we don't let any of our partner communities or ourselves go above that average. So, for the water facility, for the water utility of that $435,000, you'll see that bottom number, $394,000, that's actually utilized across the customer communities to kind of equalize them out, so they don't exceed that average rate increase. For the sewer utility, we used, of the $551,000 available, sorry, we utilized $307,000 for the individual circuit breaker. So, the remainder of that, so 87.5% goes towards the total rates for each customer community. We take 12.5% the remainder of that penalty revenue and allocate that towards an independent program that helps the individual. So, individuals can apply to get help on their water and sewer rates. We also identified another $80,000. This is rental revenue we get from the fire department for Coldbrook. That's also put into that pot of money for the individual circuit breaker. Next, build volume average. This is how we calculate the revenue expectation. We want to see a good build volume. to see a good build volume. We want to see it increasing because that means we expect, we use a three-year average of that to, to calculate our rates. So the higher that is, the, the more we're able to buy down that revenue requirement or buy down rates. For the water utility, we saw the three-year average go up by 2.66%. On these graphs, you'll notice there's a colored line and a black line. For the water utility, you'll see that blue line. That represents the annual build, build volume percent change. Formally before 2010, we used to, we used to be very reactionary. We'd base our calculation just on the previous year's activity. Starting in 2010, we realized we have an opportunity for rate smoothing. Maybe it's more logical to use a three-year average to forecast the next rate period. So that's, shows the difference of how the rate study, you know, it's helped temper rates, makes us less reactionary. So we use that black line in the rate study now. For sewer, it's, that three-year average is up 1.27%. So the main factors driving the, the rates this year, for the water utility, where we have a 2.71% increase. I outlined what is, what are the upward pressures and the downward pressures for, for both utilities. So for, for the water utility, we're still experiencing less revenue from the integrated connection fees, so less than expected. That revenue, we're collecting less of it this year compared to last year, so that's, that's going to have a negative effect on our, our rates. It's going to drive them up. Also, we had, and we discovered our meter count source report was inaccurate. This meant the projected revenue was overstated. We had to do a 2.5% rate adjustment, which, you know, you'll see is actually tempered by, you know, the, the increase in the build volume average. So it was, we were able to absorb, absorb a lot of that impact, which is good. Sure.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Mm-hmm.
Can you, can you talk a little bit about how we're going to make sure that we don't have an error of this kind again moving forward?
Oh, absolutely.
I think I have a sense of what caused it, but I am concerned that it took us so many years to catch it, considering that we have this study done every year. So maybe if you can speak to that.
Well, it's, it was kind of a perfect storm of a situation. I, I found out about it, you know, a few weeks ago, and, you know, it's, it takes three months to put together the study. So this is something I did not want to find out right at the end. But it, what it is, is when this report was written, when Kianta was put into service, basically the coding behind the report, it did an accurate count of the meters there. However, any adjustments after that. So if a meter was replaced, a meter was added to the system, the report didn't take into account that, oh, I need to include what meter was taken out of the system. So we were, in some cases, we were, that would be an example of the inaccuracy. We were double, there was some double counting going on, things like that. So as a result, when it, that meter report feeds into the rate study, it, it made me, made that calculation, made us overstate our expected revenues. So as a result, our, our rates were kept falsely low. And you'll remember, when I got here in 2014, we were seeing, God, we're having problems with our net earnings and our debt coverage. And why is that? It's because our build volume was decreasing. So that's a great reason why, but we were also working against, you know, this revenue expectation that wasn't, wasn't matching. So we dug through different areas of the rate study. What actually uncovered this was our team that's doing the AMI project. They're digging into, you know, taking into account every meter of the system. And I'm like, well, you know, how's this report matching up to what you guys are doing? And they couldn't reconcile it. So as we dug into it, we found this, we found this system setup error. Since then, now that we've identified this error, the utility business office is going full, full steam ahead as far as assessing each of the reports that were built that were correct and make, ensuring that they are. So far, we haven't discovered any of our other reports out of Kianta are inaccurate. But, but we're going through it, and we're going to set up, you know, an annual process or to, to ensure that our reports are good. Anytime we do a system update, things like that, it'll be, these, these reports will be assessed, so.
Okay, thanks.
So, yeah. Any other questions about the meter count? Okay. One thing I do want to point out is we were saving about one, about 1% I can allocate towards a rate decrease. This is the efforts the water utility has made on the O&M side. They're absorbing significant work on their, their O&M budget just from lead services. They're managing to, you know, continue to work efficiently and absorb that extra work they've been doing in concerns with lead services. I did want to point that out. The utility's been working hard. On the sewer side, we, like I said, O&M, they have an upward pressure of about 3.5%. A lot of that is driven by them, they were riding a lot of vacancies the last few years, and now they're, they're finally filling those positions. They have also been doing a lot of work with their field ops crew. So just, just that was an upward pressure. You'll see on the previous slide and this one, assets are a big piece of what, what is a upward pressure for rates for them, for both utilities. And then they're seeing decreases, like they've, they're using more circuit breaker this year, which, which is helping them. And also, their build volume is up. So that puts the sewer utility at This is just a view of what is going on per customer community. What's their individual rate increase or decrease? You'll see for the city of Grand Rapids, for water, we need roughly half a million more in revenue, to cover in revenue requirements. So that's about 2.17% increase. You'll see Walker, Kentwood, Cascade, Grand Rapids Township for the water utility, they're all at 3.63%. You might look at that and say, how, how can they all match? But that's, that's the average increase of the system. So those are communities that are getting benefit from the circuit breaker. Over on the sewer side, actually Grand Rapids, Grand Rapids Township, and Wright Township are getting the benefit of the circuit breaker. So they're stopping at 3.66% increase. This page is the effect, just based on average usage for the domestic, domestic user is the approximate quarterly bill. So for residents of Grand Rapids, we're saying if they're a water and sewer customer, they'll be paying roughly $6.15 more this year than, on their quarterly bill than they were last year. And I'm talking calendar year, rate years, based on calendar year, if I didn't specify that.
All right, Molly, I'm going to have you-
Sure.
-wrap it up a little bit.
Okay.
We're running, we're running behind, and I still have two more items.
Absolutely. No, all I had left was the historical rate changes. You can see over time, we're, we're well, you know, within the averages. We're actually below the average for the sewer utility. I also usually talk about debt coverage. Water utility, still doing great. We're building back from when we were low in 2014. We want to pay attention to that. All-in coverage is what we're judged on by rating agencies now. Ideally, we get up around 1.5, 1.6. Here's a picture of the sewer utility. And then our next steps is just, tomorrow I go present this to the utility advisory board, and then, you know, throughout the month, we'll be getting feedback from the community as well as our partner communities. And on December 18th, I'll, I'll return with the resolution for rate approval. Just really quick, I want to thank the team I work with, my two financial analysts, Janessa Carter and Nick Salazar, and, as well as the administration. And a lot of people go into this, utility engineering, the utility business office. I get to stand up here, but there are about 30 people behind me. So I just want to acknowledge their work, too.
Yeah, great, thank you. All right, commissioners, any questions or comments?
No.
All right. Thank you. City manager?
Yes, I, I too want to thank Molly and the staff for their work. But just also to highlight on Slide 9, I think we talked about the downward pressures on the water side, but also in the future, some may have expected to see the rate reduction that we discussed based on the biodigestion project. And if you could just clarify that, rate reduction is anticipated for future years-
Yeah.
-after build-out.
So, so the, the rate study is based on previous year's activities and known adjustments for the, for the next rate year, calendar year. The biodigestion project, we were forecasting with the, I believe you, we've discussed with you, the RINs revenue, we expect to come in as, you know, the sale of the natural gas, stuff like that. And we expect that to result in a net savings to the sewer fund. So that will, that will be probably a one-time adjustment, then we level off over time. But, but right now, you know, after that gets into service, then we'll be able to experience that in our rates. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, commissioners, that will take us to our next item. This is a resolution scheduling a special meeting of the city commission to be held on December 4th from 1:30 to 5:00 here in our chambers. And this is for the purpose of strategy, is what I have written here. But it's to give an opportunity for us to come together and start talking about priorities related to the upcoming budget. Good? Anything to add, city manager?
Nope, looking forward to the feedback.
All right.
Need to move it? So moved?
Support.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right, next, I'm going to have our city clerk give us a very brief update from the election that occurred last week. And then I think commissioners will take just a very quick break, so we can use the restroom and get some coffee, and give Suzanne an opportunity to set up her materials. Hopefully it'll work. So I'll turn to our city clerk.
Sure. Well, what I was looking at, looked at what happened in August, where we went from, you know, normally a 16% turnout to 28% turnout. And then, and then looking at where ABs were going, I had a prediction, I modeled city of Grand Rapids at 53%, and it went actually 56% turnout. Now, you would think that, why are we celebrating, you know, only half the people showing up? But in a gubernatorial election, I think that's impressive numbers to see. When you really dial into certain precincts, for example, Precinct 38, which is at Coit Academy, that was 137% over the 2014.
Wow.
So, so they more than, they almost doubled in a half on the turnout. The highest turnout precinct historically is Precinct 20, up in the Upper West Side, I believe. And they went up 24%. So because they normally have a higher turnout, so then they're not going to have it. But where, where, there were several precincts that were over 100%, and they're typically in our really low turnout areas. So I think the coupling between, you know, we used to say all elections are local. I think that has flipped, you know, in the last dozen years or so, that now all elections are, are becoming national with a local spin on it. So as, as the elections are, you know, we're in a 24/7 news cycle, so I think that turnout drove, you know, you saw this nationwide. But I think we were prepared for that higher turnout. As I said before, we were looking at president, we were looking at presidential turnout, so, which is normal, which was 63% for the city. So we were only seven points behind. We're only a couple thousand behind in absentee ballots than we were in a presidential. So, looking forward into, going into 2020, and the reality of Proposal 3 passing, which is no reason absentees and same-day registrations and other things, looking at what we have to prepare for as far as staff-wise, because right now, we're about 18% of voters are voting absentee. I, I can see somewhere of 50% of the voters voting absentee or higher. And we just don't have capacity in the, the second floor here to do that. So as we're looking at the next couple of years' budgets, how we get into preparing for that. And then following quickly after that is the 2022 reapportionment, where we have to redistrict everything and re-precinct. So we're preparing now, our office is preparing now for all those other realities. But as a whole, the communication between our, the clerk staff and the ACLU West Michigan Lawyers Committee, and, and proactive and various other groups leading up to that, of things that they've seen in the past, and their service on Election Day was invaluable to staff, and the communication that we had, where they, where they, they heard things. And sometimes they gave, made me aware of an issue that we had already solved. But, you know, it's like, it's a, it's a game of telephone all day. And the commissioners were good at letting me know some issues that they saw out there.
Don't look at me.
I'm looking at down here, not you.
I'll say, he may have heard from all of us.
A couple of you left me alone during the day. But, but, but as we, as we heard it, I think, but, but that was that communication. And as soon as, you know, it was this game of telephone, as it got down its way, usually by the time I heard it, we had, we had it addressed or knew there was an issue. But, but, but that communication is great, because there's something that could have fell through the cracks, and we don't want to have that where we just assumed everybody else knew it. And so we didn't. And so we'll, you know, we're still breaking down numbers and figuring out where, where we're at. But as a whole, I think it was a very successful day. Just normal election issues with equipment and supplies, and we'll address all those with the vendor and, and various other things. But every ballot was counted on Election Day. It's not, Arizona didn't take us a week. We were, we were all wrapped up by 6:00 in the morning. So, so, so we were, what's, say that again?
I said just throw some clerk shade right there.
Yes. So, so, well, and then just remember, remember, every state has different laws, too. So trying to bring the city manager up to how we do things in Michigan, it's a lot different than how they do it in Texas, and how they different, different Indiana or Illinois. So every state's, every state's different, it's all different rules. And so as a whole, thank you for your support. Our staff is thankful for all the support of all the other departments that help us on Election Day and, and give us that support.
So, so Joel, in, in follow-up to that, one, obviously, I think all of us heard we need more pens, and I voted stickers. I think that was unanimous.
And importance, pens, and then I voted stickers.
I know, I know. It's very important to some people. I like my I voted sticker. But I'm curious, are you going to have a formal debriefing with our partners, where you identify what went well, what areas can we improve in, and what do we need to do to gear up for 2020?
I asked the partners to, to, to give me a briefing of what they saw. And I have a email file under elections, just for November 2018, of all the emails and everything that happened. That, that way we can, I can put all that together. And then we'll have a debriefing to figure out where we did well and where we can do better.
Okay, great. Commissioners, any questions?
A huge thank you. Just a huge thank you for, you guys were up all night. The whole department was busy, so. And thank you for your attitude, too, Joel, about really being accepting of all the input that you got.
Yeah. And I want to thank our city manager, who helped identify additional staff to provide support, as well as our city attorney's office, who I believe all hands were on deck that day, and 3-1-1. I know a lot of departments stepped up to help out to make sure it was a successful day. So thank you. Anything to, in closing?
No, I, I just, you can just see all those numbers. So, you know, for making any kind of future ramifications for elections in city of Grand Rapids, all the, all these new diam, parameters will change the focus of how we look at elections in the city.
Yeah, that's an excellent point. Commissioners, any final questions about the election from last week before I, oh, here's one. Sorry, one more. Coming your way. Any, any final questions or comments for Joel before we wrap up this conversation? Like I said, I'll probably take a two-minute break real quick, and then we'll come back together for this conversation. Commissioner?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that the concern that the community has brought forward about changing our elections from odd years to even, I think, I read the newspaper article, hadn't talked to everybody, but I saw some of your comments in there. And I, I think that would be great for us to have an independent group take a look at this. I've reached out to a couple of people who are in the political science field. I know that Commissioner Moody has as well. And so I think that, you know, if the commission isn't agreeable, we could perhaps reach out to Corner Storm, Ferris, all of our, our partners in the community who have political science professors and expertise, and put together a group to, to look at that and inform us.
So, Commissioner Kelly's talking about the recommendation that has come from a few folks in the community about moving city elections from odd year to even year. And what I'm hearing, Commissioner, is your idea to, to really draw on some experts that we have in the community to have more of an independent analysis of the pros and cons.
Exactly. I think, I think we have to be really careful. We don't want to rush into a decision, and I know- a decision, and I know the holidays are coming up, so probably this would have to happen after the first of the year, but, but I think we have to be really thoughtful about this.
Okay. So, so, let me just follow up on Commissioner Kelly, and this isn't something we're voting on or anything today, it sounds like Commissioner Kelly just is bringing this up just in response to this larger discussion about the elections. So Commissioner Kelly, I, I am, if you want to put together some thoughts on, on what that might look like to share with the rest of the commission, then we can, we can think about that and then have a discussion, so just so everyone is clear about what you're proposing as we look at that issue, and if you want to do that, send it to the commission, and then that would give us something to talk about on how to move forward.
Mm-hmm.
So, okay, great. All right, so with that, I am going to close this committee of the hall, I am going to give us a two-to-three-minute break to warm your coffee and use restroom if you need it, and then let's come back in here by 11:25, so just a couple minutes, because I know we have a conversation that I think we are planning to take 30 to 45 minutes, and we have Economic Development Project Team at 12:30 today, so those of us who serve on that need to be down in 6:01, and hopefully we can find a time to eat in between then. So, we'll take a brief break, commissioners, then back in here.